Thank you and welcome. So I'd like to introduce our mayor for the day from Corpus Christi Catholic School. This is Eddyian Di Macally. And he is here to assume the duties of mayor for the day. So I would politely request that you extend to him all the courtesies that you normally extended. No, we can do better than that. Please extend more courtesy to him than you normally would to me. And thank you. And so, Eddyian, would you please call the meeting to order?
I would call Lucas Ray and...
Nope, not yet. Just call the meeting in order. I'd like to call the meeting in order.
I'd like to call a meeting in order.
Very good. It worked. They're all seated and they're all quiet. You did a good job. So now, tell them to turn off your cell phones.
Turn off your cell phones.
There you go. And ask them to stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Please stand for the indication and the pledge. Lord, we ask your blessings upon our meeting tonight. Grant us wisdom to do the right thing according to your will. Help us always to promote the common good of all in our amazing city and to remember those less fortunate than ourselves. We ask this as one community united in the pursuit of liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Amen. I do the pledge.
I am the son of the Holy Spirit. I plead with justice for all.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think Eddyian did pretty good there. What do you think? I've been the mayor for three years and I don't do it that well. So now, don't bang that again. No leave. So now, Councilmember Fernandez is going to give us a fun fact in Temple Terrace. So we started, for those of you who don't come here often, we started recently a new tradition of beginning the meeting with a fun fact about Temple Terrace, whether it's a historical fact or something that's not widely known. Then this meeting, at this meeting, it's Councilmember Fernandez's opportunity for that, so.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I want to give you a little sports trivia. So Temple Terrace has a long connection with athletics, if you count hunting preserve athletic. But, so we started as a hunting preserve. Bertha Palmer was in Sarasota and somehow traveled over to this area and really loved the natural beauty of the space and purchased 4,000 acres and built a hunting preserve and invited her friends to come down. And then, as we progressed and we started becoming an actual city, Todd, Tom Bendalo actually designed our golf course. And we're the first golf course planned community in the United States. And this was in 1921 that he designed our golf course. And then in 1925, we were the site of the Florida Open, which obviously drew many big-name golfers to the area. And we have hosted the United States Hickory Golf Championship on our course because our course is one of the few that has not been changed dramatically over the years. And you might be aware that it's on the National Registry of Historic Places. So then, our first head golf professional, Long Jim Barnes, because he was 6'4", so he was tall, he is a winner of the first two PGA Championships and held numerous other titles from teenage years, national and amateur and professional. So then, he served as our first golf professional for the club. And then in 1925, the national AAU women's swimming competition was held at the Club Maraca Pool, which, for those of you who've lived here a long time, was the rec center pool when I was a child. And it was a very nice, very interesting pool. And they liked the venue so much that they came back in 1926. And while they were here, there were a lot of celebrities in the audience and football celebrity Red Grange, which I'm not a football, not that knowledgeable, but he was actually stopped for speeding in his 12-cylinder Duesenberg while they were on their way to the Orange Groves to pick some oranges. And he did pay his ticket on sight. So, and then to round out our sports history in the area, it's Coach Jim McAluso is actually being inducted into the Sports Club of Tampa Bay Hall of Fame this June, June 7th. And for those of you who aren't aware, he is a graduate of King High School, where he eventually returned to teach PE and driver's ed, my driver's ed instructor, and coached baseball for a very long time. And he's an icon in the Tampa baseball area, and he's getting inducted. So we have a long connection with sports in Temple Terrace. So that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember. That was pretty good, huh?
Yeah.
I thought so. Good job. Thank you. So next up is Eddyian. Now you call these guys up to the podium. Nah, you don't need that. Just say, "I'd like to call Lucas Ray and Gardner Porter up to the podium."
I'd like to call Lucas Ray and Gardner Porter to the podium, please.
Here, scoot up. Read that to them. Lucas.
Police Chief for a day, with appreciation to Lucas Ray for his service to the City of Temple Terrace Police Department by serving as Police Chief for a day on April 12, 2023. Fire Chief for a day, with appreciation to Gardner Porter for his service to the City of Temple Terrace Fire Department by serving as Fire Chief for a day on May 24, 2023.
You and I have to go down there and give these two them. Come on.
For sure. He likes to hike.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. You have to move back up. It occurs to me that I might ought to share with you what's going on. So each year, Corpus Christi Catholic School has a fundraising gala. And as part of this gala for the past couple of years, the City of Temple Terrace, specifically the Police Chief and the Fire Chief, and Lori volunteered me. And so, we auctioned off at the silent auction their Police Chief for a Day, Fire Chief for a Day, and Mayor for a Day. And so, I think this is our second year, our second year of doing it. And so, each of the, each of the students comes here and spends a day or a portion of the day with the, with the Police Department, with the Police Chief shadow and the Police Chief, and then the Fire Department. And then today, we had the young man next to me, Eddyian, that came. And I don't have the cool stuff that the Fire and the Police Chief have, but I have access to. And so, that's what we're doing. For those of you who think we've lost our minds, and that's a little explanation. So at this time, I'd like to read the proclamation for the mayor for the day. And it reads, "Eddyian Di Macally, whereas in support of the Corpus Christi Catholic School Gala Forgiving Event this past March, the City of Temple Terrace donated the opportunity for a student to serve as honorary mayor for a day. And whereas, Eddyian Di Macally was given the opportunity by his parents, and whereas, Mayor Andy Ross agreed to share his authority as mayor with the City of Temple Terrace, which is very small to begin with, and if I share it, I have nothing left, with Mr. Di Macally on a temporary basis on Tuesday, May 16. And whereas, Mr. Di Macally has completed a survey of the city this afternoon with me by golf cart, learned about our style of government, interviewed directors, and has been apprised of their duties and authorized the purchase of pizza." That's all true. Now therefore, I, Andy Ross, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim Eddyian Di Macally as honorary mayor for a day on May 16, 2023, in the City of Temple Terrace, Florida. All right. You take this with you. I'm gonna give it to you, but you take that with you. And then we'll go down there and get our picture taken. Get that too. Come over here in the middle. If you can see it in the picture.
Perfect.
Are you smiling? The mayor's always got a smile. This is for you, and you are done.
It's worn out.
Yeah. Okay. Where are we now? Is there Daniel Moody here? Please approach. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to have you.
We have a proclamation here in honor of Historic Preservation Month, and I can't think of anybody more suited to receive this than you. So thanks for being here with us. Proclamation reads, "Historic preservation is an effective tool for promoting sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, promoting tourism, and maintaining community character. It is important to acknowledge and celebrate the benefit of history, architecture, and archaeology to our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped our city. Historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. Historic preservation can be the center of community discussion, uniting residents behind an important cause. The City of Temple Terrace conducted its first historic resource survey of historic properties in 1988, thereby laying the groundwork for recording historic properties with the state of Florida's Department of Historic Resources. Now therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of May Historic Preservation Month. Welcome, sir. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah. Thanks for the invite, and thanks for being, everyone being here. Yeah, I'm actually gonna participate in a few Preservation Month things this week, this week and this month. St. Petersburg, Florida, and Tampa, and then in my home of here in Temple Terrace. So, yeah, it's always an honor to cherish our history. I did not know that fact that you mentioned earlier, that we were the first planned golf course. I had no idea. And that's pretty awesome. So yeah, just, I think it's important, we have a lot of months to celebrate things now in our country and in our cities. And I think it's always vital to know where you came from and the heritage of where you live and to, and to protect it and preserve it for future generations to come. So thanks so much for having me.
Thank you, Daniel. Wait, I have to give you the proclamation.
Oh, I gotta go back.
Thanks for being here.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good to see you. Chief Obano, would you like to approach, please?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. We have a proclamation now for National Police Week. This is, "Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Two hundred and twenty-four law enforcement officers in the United States lost their lives in the line of duty last year. Preliminary reports as of April 20th of this year indicate that an additional 27 law enforcement officers throughout the United States have already lost their lives in the line of duty this year. Temple Terrace Police Officers play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our City of Temple Terrace. Temple Terrace Police Officers unwaveringly serve all people, safeguarding lives and property, protecting our community against violence and disorder, the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression and intimidation. Since the first recorded death of a law enforcement officer in 1786, more than 23,785 officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice. Now therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, do hereby proclaim the week of May 14 through 20th as National Police Week. And on May 15th, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and Temple Terrace, in memory and honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice or become permanently disabled during the performance of their duty. Chief, I know you received this on behalf of your entire department. Would you like to say a few words?
I would, sir. Thank you very much. I want to thank you and members of the City Council for always supporting us and for the proclamation that you have shared tonight. For us in law enforcement, this, this entire week, beginning on Saturday, is a time of sadness, remembrance, and reflection, as we try to honor the memory of those that we have lost, remembering not what caused their death, but how these men have lived, how they served, how they protected the communities that they swore to protect. Sadly, since April 20th, 13 additional law enforcement officers in that short span of time have been killed in the line of duty, bringing the total to 40 at this point for this year. We have a tremendous group of law enforcement professionals here in Temple Terrace. I'm blessed to be the chief here. We have a tremendous community that supports us, that have supported us through my time here, my 17 years here, in, in the face of anything and everything that has come up and, and the various ways that support has been shown to us, whether it's cookies being brought to the station, whether it's just to, just to thank you and we appreciate you on the street. It means the world to the officers, and it certainly means a lot to me when the kids bring us cards of thanks and support during some of those most difficult times. So I thank you for the proclamation on behalf of all of us. As the case is with you, I'm sure, there are people whose names are etched on that memorial that I personally served with and that I know. So for us, it is a time of sadness. So if you will indulge me for, I'm told, 58 seconds, I would ask for a moment of silence and reflection for those that have been lost and the families that were left behind.
So I don't know how Lori wants to do this.
Actually, if we can put a water bottle in.
Such a pig. Mr. LeBlanc, would you like to approach, please?
Both.
Oh, both, okay. Good evening, gentlemen. Mr. LeBlanc, Mr. Tinch. So, this is a proclamation for National Public Works Week. And as you two shared that duty, I guess it's appropriate that you're both here and welcome. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the citizens of Temple Terrace. These infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. It is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Temple Terrace to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. The year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Public Works, and the Canadian Public Works Association. Therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby set aside May 21st through 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week. And thank you very much for all you do, gentlemen. Say a few words?
Absolutely. I always say every year that public works is, they're kind of the unsung heroes of the city. We play an integral part in making sure the city runs. People pull their garbage cans out every morning, they return home from work, the garbage is gone. People turn on their faucets, water flows. They dry it down. The streets, we make safe for their use. So, a lot of things that happen, they don't, they kind of happen behind the scenes. People don't think much about it until there is an issue, but we are always very quick to go out and ensure that it is fixed as rapidly as possible. And I, for one, am very proud, again, to be part of that organization. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Tinch, Mr. LeBlanc.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the mayor, council, and Carlos for the past and future support that we've had, continued support. And if anybody has any programs that we can involve in the public works, Meredith had one for the bike awareness, we would like to find out about those.
Good.
It's, uh, it's gonna be a good year. Thank you.
It is. Thank you very much, both of you. Eddieian, you remember we had that talk about things go wrong, nobody knows they even went wrong, and tap dancing when they go wrong? Remember we had that talk? You didn't even know I was tap dancing, did you? Chief Kemp. Dr. Shepherd, I see you're in the audience. Why don't you approach, too? This proclamation is for EMS, or Emergency Medical Services Week. This year's National EMS Week's theme is EMS: Where Emergency Care Begins. Emergency medical services is a vital public service. The members of the Temple Terrace Fire Department, firefighter EMS responders provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. The emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, such as Dr. Shepherd, medical directors, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. The members of our fire department's EMT paramedics engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. It is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 21st through 27th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 21st through 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week. And thank you very much for all you do, gentlemen. Say a few words?
I always say every year that public works is, they're kind of the unsung heroes of the city. We play an integral part in making sure the city runs. People pull their garbage cans out every morning, they return home from work, the garbage is gone. People turn on their faucets, water flows. They dry it down. The streets, we make safe for their use. So, a lot of things that happen, they don't, they kind of happen behind the scenes. People don't think much about it until there is an issue, but we are always very quick to go out and ensure that it is fixed as rapidly as possible. And I, for one, am very proud, again, to be part of that organization. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Tinch, Mr. LeBlanc.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the mayor, council, and Carlos for the past and future support that we've had, continued support. And if anybody has any programs that we can involve in the public works, Meredith had one for the bike awareness, we would like to find out about those.
Good.
It's, uh, it's gonna be a good year. Thank you.
It is. Thank you very much, both of you. even went wrong, and tap dancing when they go wrong? Remember we had that talk? You didn't even know I was tap dancing, did you? Chief Kemp. Dr. Shepherd, I see you're in the audience. Why don't you approach, too? This proclamation is for EMS, or Emergency Medical Services Week. This year's National EMS Week's theme is EMS: Where Emergency Care Begins. Emergency medical services is a vital public service. The members of the Temple Terrace Fire Department, firefighter EMS responders provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. The emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, such as Dr. Shepherd, medical directors, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. The members of our fire department's EMT paramedics engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. It is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 21st through 27th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week. of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 21st through 27th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Thank you both. Would you like to say a few words?
I'll be brief, and I'd like the doctor to speak a little bit. Honorable mayor, council, city manager, thank you so much for this proclamation. I think everybody's aware that not only does the fire department run fires and fire incidents, but also EMS calls, which are roughly 85% of our call volume. Every one of our firefighters is also a paramedic, or they're in school to become a paramedic. So you can feel comfortable when we show up that we're both cross-trained. And I want the medical director, I wanted her to attend today, too. You know, we have the best medical director in the state, I think. And also, she lives in one of those older homes that we were just talking about, the old Fowler home. I don't know if everybody knows that or not, but over off of Sleepy Hollow. So, a nice preservation home. But, Brooke, if you, Dr. Shepherd, if you could say a few words?
Sure. Thank you so much for honoring our EMS providers this week, or next week. You know, I'm particularly proud of our fire department and our EMS providers, our paramedics and EMTs, who provide excellent, top-quality care, whether you call them for a splinter or a major trauma or anything in between, they're ready and have trained very hard to provide that high-quality care. I'm also particularly proud that they provide it with respect, dignity, and kindness, and they do that every single time, no matter who they respond to. So thank you so much for honoring them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. I was going to tell you, you guys are, it's okay to leave at this point. There is a transition now in the meeting, and if you were here for the proclamations or to receive a proclamation, it's not rude to get up and leave at this point unless you want to sit through the rest of the, you're welcome to stay, but I like to invite you to leave if you're sitting there thinking, well, I don't really want to get up and leave, but you can. So, very good. Council members, has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of our May 2nd meeting? And if so, is there a motion?
Move to proof.
Second.
Motion and a second. There's discussion or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays, the minutes are adopted. Next, persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. We do have a 30-minute time limit for all public comment at this portion of the meeting. If that's not enough time to accommodate all the speakers, we will hear them, we will resume public comment at the end of the meeting until everybody is heard. Three-minute time limit is imposed on all members' comments, and we do ask that you please address the council from the podium and begin with your name and city of residence. And I currently have three requests, two requests to speak. The first one is from Mr. Jack Ritter. Mr. Ritter, welcome, sir. It's good to see you.
I guess it's good to be seen. I'm not sure what I'm bringing is that good. I've been kind of laid up for about a month with medical issues, and I've been thinking about this a long time. How many open construction permits do we have in this city? How many haven't been finalized in a year from issue? I think it's a mess. And I understood, the other day, somebody called me and told me that they were going to be signed off by somebody in hierarchy. We're losing money by not prompting these people to finish up, because those reports, when they're finished, they go to the tax assessor and the tax collector. How much are we losing? And the darned people that do such have beneficial use of construction. I don't think it's right, and it's in me, it's an insult to me, I take care of my place. But I want somebody to answer those questions. How many do we have, and why are we not closing those out properly? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Next is Mr. Nick Perko, Jr.
Good evening, sir. Mayor, city council, city manager. I'm coming in tonight on a concern about permitting. I just moved in, if you all know, on Sylvia Lane, and I wanted to put up a shed, a small shed that you go down to Sam's. You know, it's already done, you just put it up, you construct it. So, I went to your website, which I have pulled up right here, for permitting services, and as it states, exceptions that do not require permit for work. Installation, construction, or moving of a pre-manufactured accessory building involving less than 150 square feet, zoning issues may apply. That's coming right off your website. So, what I thought that meant was, it's already prefabbed, all I got to do is just put it together, that I did not need a permit. I came down, I mentioned that to my homeowners association, they said, oh, for our concern, go down to the permitting office and just verify that. I came down here, because they said I had to do that for them, and put it nicely. I was down there for 15, 20 minutes, not being very happy, because I was told I couldn't do it, that I needed a permit, per code, per your city code. I tried to advise them that, what I read, and they went, we went back and forth, and I said, okay, give me the paperwork, let me go home. Maybe I misread something. So me and my wife read it. I said, just read this for me. I didn't tell her why I was asking, just what I'm doing, do you believe I need a permit? She goes, no, it's pre-manufactured, you're putting it up, you're constructing it, no, you don't need it, because it's only seven by eight. I said, great. I called the city manager, because I was concerned about my low confrontation, and I was trying to explain it to him. Well, I didn't explain it to him, I left a message. I then sent an email about the zoning requirements, make sure it was zoned. About 5 o'clock, I got a call from the director of the community development department, and he said, yes, I need a permit, per our code. I said, where? I said, no, you don't, this is it. He said he had a building person sitting next to him saying, yes, he does. So I said, okay. I took at least two hours in your code to find it, okay? If I was a regular citizen, I saw this on your front page, I would have built it, no problem, code enforcement would come by and say, you're in violation. I'm going, no, I'm not. So what I did, it is code under, there is a code underneath your code of, under permitting, section 8 dash 28A, that states, I'm sorry, I'm taking, I apologize. I had it pulled up, and now I lost it.
Just give us the code.
Okay.
Just give us the code number, we'll be able to...
Yeah, and in that code, it does, it's totally different than what is on your front page. Okay? And I would like something to be done to fix that, since I've already started building my shed, I don't want code enforcement to come by and say, hey, you're out of violation.
Mr. Perko, I am going to have to cut you off, because it's in excess of three minutes, and we didn't actually start the clock until about 40 seconds in.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We, so, yeah, our staff will be in touch with you.
Okay.
Okay, you're welcome, sir, thank you. That's the last request I have to speak. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council on items not on the agenda? Okay, very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Next, is a resolution approving the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal, for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022, including the auditor's management letter. Jeff Wolf from MSL CPAs and Advisors, and our finance director, Jim Ingram, are here to explain. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor Ross, city council. We do recommend that city council adopt a resolution approving the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022, including the auditor's management letter. MSL CPAs and advisors, the city's auditor has completed the annual audit. The city's auditor, represented here by Jeff Wolf of MSL, will present the financial report, and both he and I will be available to respond to any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
We have the presentation.
Welcome, Mr. Wolf.
Good evening. Good to see everybody again. And before I start, I'll just always thank you, the mayor, the council, for allowing us to serve you as your external auditors. You know, we work for you, and we, you know, respect that responsibility. So again, just want to thank you. I can go, I'll just go with the part of this, I mean, I can just tell you anyways, for part of this. So required communications, under government auditing standards, we're supposed, required to communicate certain things in governance, which would be of yourself as a council. First, that's our responsibilities, which is to perform an audit in accordance with the applicable standards, and then to render opinion on whether those financial statements are materially correct. Management is responsible for the financial statements. It's always important to remember that it is the cities act for, not the auditors. And they're also, sorry, it's not moving forward for me. Sorry about that. Management is responsible for also establishing internal controls to render reasonable insurance that those financial statements are materially correct. We do test internal controls and compliance as it relates to financial reporting. However, that really is to just to help plan our audit. We don't render an opinion, we don't do enough test work to render opinion on those testing. But if we did find something significant, we would communicate that to you. Happy report, no significant difficulties encountered during the audit. Management was great to work with. They've been through a lot of changeover in the last year, so I just really want to give them a lot of credit for the results. And as you'll see when I go through his reports, the results speak for themselves, so they really should be congratulated on results of the audit. No unusual accounting conventions, meaning no transactions that were recorded in incorrect period, or no transactions that weren't in accordance with GAAP. In the current year, they did implement GASB 87 as it relates to leases, which was a significant accounting standard, so they were able to implement that successfully. So again, just want to give them credit for that. As I mentioned, no disagreements with management, it was a very smooth audit process. No audit adjustments, which is always important to know. So, you know, as you request financial information, you can have some, you know, assurance that that information you're provided is accurate. So that's always important to note, and that the audit schedule was completed in accordance with the planning communication. There we go. Okay, on to our reports. And again, this will be repetitive, but trust me, this is good. It's always good results, it's good to be repetitive. So our first report is our independent audit report. That is the report on whether the financial statements are materially correct. We did have an unmodified opinion, which that is the highest level of assurance, a clean opinion that you could receive on the financial statements. The next report is our report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance. Again, we do not render opinion, but if we did have a material weakness or a significant deficiency, it would be noted in that report. And again, no findings, no issues noted in that report. And I mean, you may remember several years back, four or five years, that was not always the case. We did have material weaknesses, we did have significant deficiencies. So there really has been a strong turnaround overall in the finance department. So it hasn't always been clean, but it has been the last two years. Our next report is our single audit report. The city did meet the $750,000 threshold for a federal single audit, and that was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, the ARPA funds. You'll see that around probably the next couple of years, because OMB has continued to deem that a high-risk grant, so you will have a federal single audit the next couple of years. But again, that was a clean report, no findings, no issues noted. Next is the auditor general required management letter. This is required to communicate if there was financial emergencies, financial conditions, anything like that, or any other general comments would be included in this report. I mean, again, I mean, I think four or five years ago, we did have comments in here as it related to financial condition, but those have all been resolved, and so this is again a clean report, no findings, no issues noted. And lastly is our independent account report, and this really just relates to compliance with Florida statutes as it relates to investments. And again, no findings, no issues noted. Going on some really, really quick, high-level financial information. So the first is the citywide analysis, meaning if the city was a business, full, cruel, meaning recording of capital assets, recording of long-term debt. Your government activities, I mean, obviously, the number that jumps out is your negative unrestricted net position of 34 million. That's not uncommon, that really is related to your net pension liabilities and your OPEB liabilities. And actually, in the prior year, that number, and again, the other important number is your unrestricted net position as a percentage of total expenses. That is a negative 98%, but that did improve last year. Last year was 130%, so there is, you know, continued improvement as it relates to that. The business activities, you'll see that that number, unrestricted net position, is 12%, which that did go down from prior year, which was 24%. But that really more relates to the sanitation fund, which I'll kind of get into a little bit more at the end when we get into the individual fund statements. Next is your general fund, which obviously is your main operating fund. You may look at comparisons and say, wow, why are the numbers so much larger? Well, that really is the impact of the ARPA funds. That cash is sitting there now waiting to be spent, you know, be spent in accordance to the plans, and since it's, that money can't be recognized as revenue until you have eligible expenditure, so that's why your liability is in there. You remove those amounts, they're fairly comparable to prior year. Really, the number, you know, I think the key takeaway here is the unassigned, the assigned and unassigned fund balance as a percentage of total expenditure, this is really your ability to meet your ongoing operating expenses and any potential emergencies that may come up. Again, so you're at a 41.7%, which is a very strong number, which even increased compared to prior year of 34.6%. Looking at just a quick comparison to the general fund budget, you can see that you had a favorable variance of 2.1 million as it relates to revenue. The expenditures came in under at .6 million, so overall, you had a favorable variance to budget of 2.7 million in your general fund. Then just lastly, on the enterprise funds, the water and sewer, you overall had an operating income of .4 million, which is down slightly from 1.4 million, but overall, this still remains a pretty healthy fund. You can see the sanitation, again, had an operating loss of .3 million compared to .2 million in the current year. And then actually, your unrestricted net position, which is your funds that are available for any operating expenses, actually went negative this year, .1 million. Just something to keep in mind, you know, that this fund definitely seems to, you know, have a little bit of a negative trend, trend, just to be aware of. But overall, again, you know, really, the takeaway, I think, from the audit was, it was a very clean audit. Finance definitely should be congratulated. definitely should be congratulated on the results. And overall, the city is in strong financial health. But at that point, if there's any questions on the audit, the reports, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. So we would ask for public comment first, and then we'd ask questions after. So are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Okay, council members. Questions for the finance director?
There's one.
Oh, ma'am, you have to approach to the podium, please.
I'm sorry. Could we leave?
Yes. Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. No, no, that's fine. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks, guys, for being here. Okay. Are there questions for the finance director or the auditor? Mr. Wolf?
I do.
Questions. Councilmember Fernandez?
Well, regarding the sanitation fund, I know this is really more for the finance director. With regard to the trend, I know that this is something that we've been looking at, and that's one of the reasons that the rates have been adjusted in the, recently.
Correct.
Are the rate adjustments that we have implemented going to stop the negative trend, or are there other approaches that we are considering?
I think that's one part of the overall solution. We, I've talked to city manager and the assistant city manager, that we really need to look at it during this budget season to look at maybe what some other municipalities, particularly in Florida, are doing. I know that we're not the only one that struggles with the sanitation fund, but certainly raising rates, increasing the revenue, that's, that's important. But I do believe that we need to look at our expenditures to see what kind of strategies that we can employ, see what other governments are doing to help their sanitation fund. It is, we have done a few things this year. We changed the ordinance to be able to respond a lot better to, to these kind of situations, not be restricted on how much we can raise rates. But that's, I don't have any specifics yet, but it is something that we definitely are looking at going into this budget planning season.
For, for my purposes, as we go through the budget process, I would like to know all of the factors that are based, are causing the increase. I know the tipping fees have gone up, and that, I know that those are completely out of the city's control, but let's, but I'd like to, to look at all of the factors that are causing the negativity, not just the rate increase, but, but what has changed over the years. And then I'd like, I would like to know what other municipalities are doing, because I know that the smaller municipalities are, are all dependent on the county or their counties. And the counties are in charge of the tipping fees, which is expensive, as well as actually taking the trucks to those locations. So when you're putting together the analysis, those are some of the things that I'm going to be looking for.
Okay, we will certainly do that. And we appreciate the council's attention to that.
Thank you. Like, some of, just, you weren't here at the last budget, so a lot of, I remember the discussions, because we dug very deep into this, and a lot of the factors, the two big factors were tipping fees and fuel. Those were the two biggest, yeah. Councilmember Schisler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I didn't really have any questions. I just wanted to say kudos to the finance department between you and Jennifer. You guys have done a tremendous job in turning everything around. I know, Mr. Wolf, we've, we've had many discussions on the audit committee, back from, going way back to the planning stages and, and all the way through the, the, the actual fieldwork and, and everything. You guys have done a great job. Your whole staff has done a great job. And you've, you've, you've made great strides in fixing what was wrong and making it so that it's not going to happen again. And this is the sanitation fund, this is something we're working with. Mr. Wolf, you've, you've advised us before in the past as to what's, what are some good strategies and percentages of, of fund balance health, for lack of a better way to put it. And we'll probably be picking your brain more as, as we go through the year. But thank you very much, everybody involved. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, councilmen, we have questions about the audit.
Nope.
If there are no questions about the audit, is there a motion to approve? Or, yeah, approve?
I move to approve the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022, including the auditor's management letter.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? No nays? Is accepted, adopted? I would ask Mr. Ingram to approach for a brief moment, please. I don't want to prolong the meeting, but I feel that this is a worthy place to stop and pause for a second. So I just want to thank you on behalf of myself and the entire council and the rest of the city government sitting here. I know that you've had some turbulence in finance over the past couple of years, particularly last year. We've had a change in city managers, we've had changes in finance managers, we've had struggles with team building, and, and we've had a lot of challenges in the finance department. And through it all, they have performed, not only has Mr. Ingram kept the ship afloat, but we've just heard how he's corrected the course. And so to correct this, the course under the best of circumstances would deserve some accolades. But to correct the course during a transition period with an interim city manager and then a new come city manager, staff overturning, you know, staff attrition, staff struggles, team cohesion issues, key retirements and utility billing, software issues, ADA compliance issues, you, I mean, it's just been, everything that could be thrown at this department has been thrown at them. And so under these circumstances, to bring forth an audit like this is remarkable. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. Thank you, Councilmember Schisler. And I just want to say, you're right, we have a great staff, great people. That makes it a whole lot easier. And the support of our city manager has been tremendous. So.
Well, please share these comments with your staff tomorrow.
I will. Thank you.
So next we have resolution adopting conditional use 23-01 for the operation of a tattoo parlor located at 6610 East Fowler Avenue, Suite F. And I will open the public hearing and ask anyone who intends to speak on this matter to stand for the oath administered by the deputy city clerk.
Do you share or affirm? Does the testimony you're about to give?
Very good. City attorney, would you please pull for ex parte communication?
Yes. If any member of council has had verbal or written communication with anyone regarding this matter outside of the public meeting, you are required to state with whom that communication took place, when that occurred, and what the communication actually was. And if it was in writing, then a copy must be submitted to the clerk to be made part of the record. So if I could start with Councilmember Fernandez?
Nothing except for the letter that was left for us at the dais.
Okay.
Yes. Today, around noon, I had a phone call from a Mr. Gary Martin advising me that his mother was sending in a letter of opposition to the tattoo parlor, and would someone from council read it into the record. And I said I didn't know, and left it at that.
Thank you.
I have the, only received the same letter on the dais that was mentioned by Councilmember Fernandez.
I've received nothing regarding, except for the letter on the dais.
I have the letter also. Thank you.
And I don't have that letter.
No, we don't read those into the record.
No, I wasn't going to. I just, everybody had one.
Okay, okay. Very good. All right. So where are we? Community Development Director Mike Sherman is here to explain. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, there's a request for a conditional use permit and a public hearing and a reading of a resolution to open a tattoo parlor located at 6610 East Fowler Avenue. The owner of the property is HNY Fowler Investments, LLC. The owner's representative tonight, the owner's representative is Bruce Strumpf, and the applicant tonight is Travis Thrapp of At Last Tattoo. And he's in the audience tonight. He may want to say a few things to the council as well. Can you start now?
Okay, while that's booting up, I briefly, I know the council knows this, but because we're televised, I wanted to let the general public know what about a conditional use. So a conditional use is a use that's allowed in a zoning district only after certain specific requirements have been met. And the city council has attached these to conditions of approval. Conditions of approval are generally written into the code itself, and that's the instance in our code. The, the conditions for approving or denying this conditional use is in the code itself. And why do we have conditional uses? Well, conditional uses are uses that have sometimes operational or physical or other characteristics that may be different from those of a predominant permitted use, but which is a use that complements or may otherwise be compatible with the intended overall development within a district, provided that specific standards are met. And the conditions for this particular request is that there are no other tattoo parlors within a 500-foot radius of this particular one, and that's within the city of Temple Terrace, in unincorporated Hillsborough County, and within the city of Tampa. So here's the project site. It's on East Fowler Avenue. The current zoning is CG Commercial General. The proposed use is a tattoo parlor, and it's about .62 acres, a little over half an acre. If you can see the black radius around that property, those are the property owners which we notified through regular mail. These are some site pictures of the property right now. The first one in the upper left is the actual shop and location itself. As you look to the right, that is looking to the east for the development on the east side of the property. The next one is on the right, is looking west on the, on the site. The, the two other ones with the signs, that's the intersection of Fife and East Fowler and Oban and East Fowler, and it's bisected by those two streets. And the last one on the right is a wall buffer. And I wanted to show that because this is the buffer requirements which, in this existing development, which could protect or the adjacent residential areas from any off-site impacts. Here's the site plan of the property. There is, Suite F is highlighted in blue. Right now, there's about 32, I counted them wrong. So there's 32 parking spaces on the property. There's required by the zoning code for 29 spaces only. So they have, based on our codes, they have adequate parking for this site. This is the floor plan. It's about 640 square feet. Those are the stations outlined in black with a legend on the right. There will be, I believe, four artist stations. So here's a aerial, and if you'll look, it's really hard to see, unfortunately, but there's a red 500-foot radius. And within that, there are no tattoo parlors in any of the jurisdictions, Tampa, Hillsborough County, or the city of Temple Terrace. So per our code, tattoos are only permitted as a, parlors only permitted as a conditional use in the CG commercial zoning district. The tattoo parlor, and this is a code language, but for the record, I'm going to read it. A tattoo parlor should not be located within a specified distance of specific uses as follows unless a waiver is granted by the city council of a 500-foot, within a 500-foot of any other tattoo parlor, or no more than one tattoo parlor per block, whichever is more restrictive. And again, there's no tattoo parlors within a 500-foot radius. And this B says it would be in all the local jurisdictions, and we checked, within that radius, there are no tattoo parlors in that 500-foot radius. The Development Review Committee looked at that. We had no objections to the conditional use permit. On the 27th of April, the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission reviewed the conditional use and determined that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use with the following conditions, which are the two conditions out of the code. The applicant is in the audience tonight, if y'all, if he wants to make any comments, but I'm available to answer any questions that the council may have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. If the applicant wishes to speak, this would be the time. Welcome, sir. We just need you to begin with your name, please.
Thank you for having me. My name's Travis Thrapp. I'm the owner and the main artist, only artist currently working at At Last Tattoo Company. I am excited and looking forward to joining the business community in Temple Terrace. And I am looking to provide a safe, sterile, clean service to anyone that's able, able to come in and get a tattoo. And that's all I really have to say. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Thrapp. You might want to take a seat up front. Would you have public comment, and then there's time for councilmember questions?
Absolutely.
Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Okay, councilmember questions for Mr. Sherman or Mr. Thrapp?
I have a question.
Councilmember Schisler?
Thank you. Mr. Sherman, could you go back to your presentation, like, the third page from the end?
Okay.
The county conditional.
That's it? Not one or further back, sir?
Yeah, what is, that's perfect. What, the, the, the sentence begins, where city's comprehensive plan development strategies related to fostering urban infill and redevelopment occurring in mixed, what, what is meant by urban infill?
So urban infill in this instance would be filling in that store. It can also mean vacant lots within a commercial district or vacant lots within a residential district that are built up around it. So that was what the county, City County Planning Commission uses their justification for comprehensive plan consistency. So.
Back when this, and I'm not sure when, what the, what the genesis of this ordinance is, what was the general feeling for tattoo parlors? Is there any, maybe there's no way to know that. But was, there seemed to be an apprehension to, to, to permitting them within, within our city. And I think we only had two, correct?
I don't think we have any within the municipal limits.
I thought we had one on 56th Street. I could be wrong. I didn't go looking for it. No. I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Oh, the Tampa outlets.
But it's not permitted.
Okay.
That's another thing we'll deal with.
All right. Thank you. That, that was my questions.
Other questions, councilmembers? Very good. If there are no other questions, I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, approving conditional use application CU 23-01 for the property located at 6610 East Fowler Avenue, Suite F, to allow for a tattoo parlor subject to certain conditions of approval, providing an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the resolution adopting conditional use 23-01 for the operation of a tattoo parlor.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion? I have a, a comment to make. I'd like to share this with the public prior to this vote. So I, I know there will be those who live in the city who will be opposed to this and say, how in the world did the council approve this, and why did they approve it, and why are you opening the door to this in our city? We have a letter... We have a letter already, basically to that effect. I just want to remind the public of something, and I've said this before, but every time something comes up, we tend to forget. The council has certain powers to say yes or no on certain projects and developments and zoning and uses of property, but we do not have what's called unfettered discretion. In other words, we can't just say, nah, we don't really want that, so no, we're not going to approve that, or, you know, we don't really want that particular kind of business at that corner, it's not really what we would like to see on that corner. We cannot do that. That's unfettered discretion, and it's illegal. We do get to say yes or no, but only within the parameters of the law. And so if a proposed project, or zoning, or use, or anything comes before us, we have to go to the law and say, what is the extent of our discretion under the law? And we have to stay within those boundaries. In this case, the code, as you saw, is very clear. It's permitted in general, general commercial zoning district as long as it meets the conditions. And there's only one condition, and that is it's 500 feet from another tattoo parlor, which it is. So before people get upset with the council and say, what are you thinking? I just want you to know, we cannot just do whatever we want up here. So, anyway, I just wanted to say that. Are there other comments on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any nays, no nays, and the resolution is adopted. This does not have to appear for a second reading. Is that correct? Doesn't say? Okay. Very good. Mr. Thrapp, best of luck to you, sir. Next item is the first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance adopting rezoning of Folio 201584-0000 and an address of 8701 Overlook Drive. And I will open the public hearing and ask anyone who intends to speak on this matter to stand for the oath administered by the deputy city clerk.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Very good. City Attorney, would you please poll for ex parte communication?
Yes. If any member of council has had verbal or written communication with anyone regarding this matter outside of the public meeting, you are required to state with whom that communication took place, when that occurred, and what the content of that communication was. If it was in writing, please provide a copy of that to the city clerk to be made part of the record. And again, starting with Councilmember Fernandez.
None.
I have had none.
I have had none.
I have had none.
I've had none.
Very good. Thank you, City Attorney. Community Development Director Mike Sherman is still here to explain.
Yes, sir. So again, Mike Sherman, Community Development Director. Tonight for the council's consideration is a first public hearing and reading of an ordinance for RZP 23-01, which is a request to rezone .24 acres located 8701 Overlook Drive from the R10 Zone District to the PD Zone District with a folio number of 038218-0000. The owner is Race 1 LLC. The applicant is Development Support Services LLC, and the applicants are in the audience So this is a map of the area showing on the left our community redevelopment area, and this particular request is within the CRA. So as the council knows, the community redevelopment area has some specific zoning regulations called the downtown community redevelopment plan overlay zoning districts. This particular development is subject to those. The project tonight is for four attached dwelling units, and the map on the bottom on the right shows the lot in question. It's at the intersection of Overlook Drive and Grove Hill Road. They are requesting the PD District. It's a little less than a quarter acre. The council remembers this was a project that was submitted to the city back in 2021, and I believe in 2022, they, applicants went to public hearing, and they were asked to come resubmit with a less number of units, and that's what the applicants have done. I think actually they've sharpened their pencils quite well and have come back and presented the city a pretty good project. This is an aerial of the property. Again, the subject property is bolded in red. Again, because it's in the CRA, all CRA rezoning applications have to be rezoned to the PD or Plan Development designation, not what's known as Euclidian or straight zoning. The applicant proposes to place four attached single-family houses or units on the property, and it's surrounded by single-family and multifamily units, so it stays residential and fits in quite well with the community. Again, I wanted, because of the, I know the council knows this, but for the folks in the audience, the planned zoning district, Plan Development Zoning Districts generally used for flexibility, creativity, and allows, within the compounds of the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map category, allows for its, basically its own zoning district to be written. And it gives the applicant, as well as the city, more flexibility for giving and taking. It isn't always just the city gives, but also we can ask for other things like fences or more landscaping or things like that as well. As part of a PD District, all PD Districts must have a conceptual master plan. This is the one that has been submitted with this particular project. Now, because it's a PD zoning district, it requires two public hearings. The second time we're going to hear this public hearing, the applicant has a full set of construction plans that they'd like to be approved or reviewed and approved by the council, and that right now is going through the development review process. So this concept master plan is for four single-family attached dwelling units. There's two parking spaces per dwelling unit. The stormwater is vaulted, so it will be out in front of the units itself. There's three-foot landscape buffer on the three sides. The front setback from building line to property line is 25 feet. The side setbacks are both, the side and the rear setbacks are both five feet. And yeah, I said there's a buffer on three sides. So as part of the CRA, the downtown community redevelopment plan overlay zoning districts, one of the requirements is that the applicants or buildings that are built or substantially redeveloped follow the architectural guidelines in the Land Development Code. And the Land Development Code basically says that the, the architectural standards have to be Spanish Revival, Spanish Vernacular, Mediterranean Revival, or Mediterranean Vernacular. So that's why we like to have elevations submitted with each PD rezoning application. And this is the front elevation of the development itself. It's two stories, it's four units. Here's the rear elevation, and this is what the sides are going to look like. Now, as I said, there's architectural standards in the code for this particular zoning district, and I've made some clips from the elevations, and I wanted to briefly talk about that. Our code requires that the, basically both styles, the vernacular and the Mediterranean Revival have, contains walls of stucco finish or a smooth stucco finish facades, and this walls appear to be clapboard style materials and not stucco as required by the code. Also, windows are, have requirements that they're either punched windows where the exterior and interior wall surfaces around the window extrude further out past the window surface, and requires arched windows in the vernacular style of the Mediterranean architecture. These proposed windows appear to be double-hung. I've not seen any, like, construction plans for them, but they appear to be double-hung, and that doesn't comply with our code requirements. The Spanish Renaissance Revival style requires ornate entrances. The Spanish Renaissance Revival Vernacular style requires decorative entrances. Doors should be recessed, single or double multi-angle doors with arched or rectangular doorways. These proposed doorways don't meet that standard. There's roof requirements on how they should look and what the materials are made of. The architectural styles in our downtown redevelopment plan overlay district require red terracotta barrel roof tiles. The proposed roof appears to be a material that's not of that, and it possibly metal corrugated, and does not include red terracotta barrel roof tiles. And then the railings, the railings are horizontal, where typically the railings of these styles go vertical. Having said all that, the code allows for the city council to give waivers at the site and construction plan phase for vertical construction, which y'all will be seeing those in the next, when we can get it back to you, once it's gone through the Development Review Committee. And also, they need to be identified in the PD. They can be either required as conditions of this project, or as part of the PD conditions, they can get those waivers. So they can be done at both stages, take those waivers if they're done in the PD, and carry them over to the site and construction plans. The Development Review Committee reviewed the rezoning proposal. We have no objections. On April 4th, the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission reviewed the rezoning application and recommended approval. They made a finding that it complies with the long-range planning goals surrounding neighborhood and is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending approval on first reading, and our findings that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We are recommending, since we don't have the authority to give any waivers, that waivers are not given, but that again is up to the city council. The applicants are in the audience tonight, and I'm available to answer any questions that the city council may have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Would the applicant like to make a presentation? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening. For the record, my name is Stephen Thompson. I'm an attorney with the law firm Anatchme Thompson in Tampa, and I have been sworn. With me this evening, I have Mr. Thomas, who's the developer, who's going to talk a little bit about his plan, and also Todd Pressman, our land planner, who'll talk a little bit about the planning aspects and compliance with the plan with your code and comprehensive plan. This is the first reading of the zoning, but this is not, obviously, the first time we've been in front of this council. We appreciate that. And I think what, what we did, we heard what the council's concerns were, we heard the neighbors' concerns, and I think that's all part of the planning process. You listen, and you go back, and I think the planner was right. We sharpened our pencils, if you may, and I think we've come back with a plan that really, I mean, meets the concerns that were made by the council and also by the neighbors. The first big change is we reduced the density. We were seeking eight units. We reduced that 50%. We're now only seeking four units. There also was a concern that this was going to be a rental project, and we basically, I'm working on the homeowner documents, these are going to be two single-family attached homes, they're going to be an HOA, and they're going to be marketed for sale. I think it's an exciting opportunity. You saw the graphics, too. I think the developer has done a really commendable job, and it's not just a good project. I think it's taken all the concerns that we heard, incorporated them, and I think we're coming back with a really good plan that Temple Terrace will be proud of. And I'd like to ask Charlie Thomas, the developer, just to say a couple of things, and then I'm going to have Todd talk, and then I'll just say a couple of closing comments. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Thomas.
Charlie Thomas, mayor and council. So I would like to start off with is that we heard you. We came before you asked, could we reduce the density, and we did. There was concern, the first unit was multifamily rental, and that this is single-family attached, fee simple. We've hired a professional planner, we've worked with staff, we have had endless meetings with your staff, sharpening what we're doing. Todd, when he comes up, he'll show you a updated rendering of what we've done to get it moving. It's, we have to get a concept to get a starting point, and then we make the adjustments. It's a two-part. Part of the challenge in getting us back here was, your code requires us to do the zoning and the site plan. When we left, we were asked to do both of them at the same time. We ran into challenges being able to do both at the same time, because I had to go through development, we had to get this done. So we were able to get it, a set of plans, a full set of construction drawings, knowing that we could move the skin, which we've done. It was sliding on it, we moved the skin to stucco, we've added the arches, we've put the banding around there. Those little things that we've worked to take care of those, just to make sure we're addressing that, your concerns. Reduce the number of units, fee simple, and, and as he speaks to tax basis, one other thing, you know, we spoke about the history, you said about that, about coach Mac. And so I graduated from King High School, I went to Greco, but he wasn't just a baseball coach, he was like a coach of men, because I was on the track team. But he spent his time investing in young people, that's what he did in driver's ed, when he said, hey, what are you going to do with your life? How are you going to be better? How are you going to do that? And that's what we are in Temple Terrace, right? That's what we're committed to, that we go back and we do those things. And so that's the full picture of why are we committed to Temple Terrace, because Temple Terrace is home. My neighbor across the street that we spoke with, I was born in River Del Ray. And so for those who don't know, River Del Ray is right there on the city side of Temple Terrace, that line. So I grew up in this neighborhood. This is where I went to school, I went to middle school, I went to high school. But our commitment is to come back and put that investment, we're putting a million-dollar investment into the community, which is going to increase the tax revenue, those kind of things, that it's going to be better for people in our community. And so that we're from here, for here, to make it better for our community. Todd?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Pressman?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, number 451 St. Petersburg. I do have a PowerPoint, if we could go to that, please? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Mr. Sherman's been a big help on this. He's held our feet to the fire, but he's been, he's been a big help with this. Thank you. So this is 8701 Overlook, it's revised application and project. You've heard the basic premises before you, and of course, everyone knows where this is located. Per the property praiser, this is the property here. I think what's really important in regard to zoning, as you can see, the property budding to the east is a very high-density property. It's zoned RMF. As you can see, each one of those little ridges is a different unit. So this is a very high-dense property budding on the east. I would suggest the property before you, we're asking your consideration, is a good transitional zone property to the single families to the north and to the west. And this is a better view of it. You can see the high density to the east and the location of the property on the corner. This has been approved and supported by the City County Planning Commission and your Temple Terrace city staff, as you heard your report from Mr. Sherman. So the key here, what you've heard are changes and modifications, clearly, developers heard from you, has made significant changes in regard to the site plan. It was eight units, it's been reduced to four. I think that's a tremendous decrease. That would be like, as I look in quickly on the internet to impress you, your 2020 total tax revenue in the city was $2 billion. That'd be like reducing it to $1 billion. So these guys are taking a tremendous change and modification for this project and to meet your concerns and the desires of the city. Now, regard to elevations, they did have architect Greg, what's Greg's last name? The architect, right. Let me pass these around to you. Should I pass them here? So again, as this has been a work in progress, and your staff has indicated some concerns, this is the current proposed elevation, which is coming around to you, which was designed by our architect in specific direction of the elements that are required in the architectural directions. So we feel this is a very good elevation, it's a very good-looking elevation, in my opinion, but I don't get a vote here, of course.
Mr. Pressman, can I stop you just for a second?
Yes, please.
Just hold that thought. Brian, is there a way to zoom in on that so the people in the gallery and watching can see it a little better? If he holds it up? If you'll hold that up. Okay. I just want to make sure everybody can see that.
I feel like I'm docking at the.
Okay, we can back out now, and you can resume. Thank you.
So you can see, there are some significant changes there, and I do want to state, talking to Charlie. to state, talking to Charlie and our team, that they are planning on moving forward and will meet the specifications of what's required for architectural. They believe that this elevation does a lot of that, but they want to continue work with the city and will continue to work with the city in that regard. If we could go back to the PowerPoint, please? Thank you. So elevations from prior were pretty flat, not personally, I don't think terribly attractive. And I've shown you what's proposed today, I think that's, that's a big difference. So we find that the property, and you've heard from different authorities of review, that it's compatible, it's transitional, cohesive, fits well between single-family, multifamily, provides a good housing type for the city. And Charlie and his team has spent quite a bit of effort reaching out to the community, working with the community. That was one of their mailers that they did send out for comment. So with that, I would just correct one point of the record. By the way, I'm not an official land planner, I'm a zoning consultant, I just want to make sure the record is clear on that. And we're here to answer any questions or any concerns and we hope that we met your concerns and, and your directions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pressman. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Very good. Councilmember questions? We have a variety of folks to ask questions of, so Councilmember Abel.
My question is for Mr. Sherman. So just to clarify, today what we're doing is we're looking at the rezoning only and there's no waivers required for the rezoning.
That's correct.
It's just the rezoning. Okay, thank you, that's all.
I felt like it was important to identify the architectural concerns, but there's no waivers that need to be granted at this time.
Understood, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
Regarding the zoning request, if, if council approves this on, well, obviously on first reading today, but if we were to approve this and the project didn't go forward for some reason, what would this zoning approval allow in this space?
So they would revert back to the R-10, I believe it is, zoning district and it would be developed under those, those zoning requirements.
So R-10, that allows for 10 units per acre?
Maximum 10 per acre, yeah.
On this size, what would be the maximum units under that zoning?
Hang on.
All right.
What? Just one?
Okay, so it would be, so if, if we approved this zoning change and for some reason the project did not happen, the zoning change is there and goes forward, it doesn't, it's not conditional on the property being
Two years it has to, you have to start the project in two years. If within that two-year time period, there's no dirt turn, there's no construction plans approved, they're not moving forward, then it reverts back to the original zoning, which is R-10.
I mean, and, because I just want to clarify, it's not that I'm opposed to making this, approving this tonight on first reading, but while this project might be a good project for the space, if we do alter the zoning, I want to make sure that we're not opening ourselves up to a project coming in potentially that's not a good project, that then we would not be able to deny.
Yes, ma'am. This project, because it's a PD and they're writing their own zoning district, basically working with the city, it's only specific to what they've asked for. So it's not like a shell where it's a BD and now another developer can come in and say, hey, now I want to do this. If they wanted to do something different than what may be approved, the new party would have to come back in, request another PD zoning from the city council.
Okay. And then regarding the architectural features that you brought up in your presentation, obviously tonight, we're not addressing any of that, but if we were to go forward with this and on first reading approve it, what does that implicate then for the expectation for the architectural features that, that are in the code? Those still have to go before us, they would still have to be either granted a waiver or changes would be made?
That's correct. They would, the actual waivers would be granted at the site and construction for vertical or horizontal construction. The site and construction plans is where the waivers officially are granted or, or not granted. I think based on what I've seen, the applicant has come a long way towards meeting some of those requirements. They could probably do a little better, but it, it seems to, with the arches and the roof slopes and things like that, meet more of what our code has, the downhill code has in it.
That's it.
Questions? I'd have a question for Mr. Thomas. Welcome back. It's good to see you back. I'm glad you came, but I was hoping that you would come back and I'm glad to see that you did. So my question for you is, if you look at the, the elevations that were contained in the PowerPoint and then you look at this one, there's already been some changes made to these and both of them look really nice. I mean, I don't think either one of them are like, oh my gosh, what are we doing? They both look pretty good. But here's my question for you, how far along in the design process are you? And, and there's a reason I asked this.
Yes, sir. So to meet the request of the board on the, we're, we're tied to, we have construction drawings which are going through the site plan. With that being said, we can change the box. So the box isn't going to change, but the elevations can say, we can shrink it, we can move that around, but we had to, to, to meet the expectation, we had to get, pass it through the civil department so that they could start doing their review to make sure, because the, this, the elevation is, is the least of the concern. If we can't get through the, the civil department and the parking doesn't work or the drainage doesn't work, the project doesn't work. And so we've gone full through the construction drawings, we're just working through what the elevation looks like and how we work with the city to make sure we accomplish those.
Okay, good. And that's, that's, I'm with you. I hear what you're saying about the, I understand. Which leads me to why I asked the question. So I, I, and I'm speaking only for me, I don't know what my colleagues on the council think. Speaking from me, I would have no real heartburn, given where this is located in the CRA, with it being a little, you know, maybe we don't require, if you were building this at 56 and Bush, we'd be pretty strict, you know, to, because everybody's driving by that. Here, we probably, you know, at least I would say, well, okay, maybe the design standards. But when I'm looking at your elevations, which is the reason I bring this up, we're talking about the exterior, we're not talking about changing the box around or the parking. I mean, we're talking about facade. So it seems like it would not take a whole lot to add some features that are in a little less Key West and a little more Mediterranean revival.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, surely there's going to come across something where you're not going to use arched windows or something along those lines. I sensed that that probably wouldn't be a big deal.
It isn't. And, and our balance is, we want to make the, we want to get the intent and spirit of the architectural design as well as the other complement of that is the neighborhood, that we want to fit into our neighborhood so that we're, we're a balance, that we don't want to be a monstrosity in the neighborhood that's so different than the rest of it. So it's kind of a blend to, when, when you come through, it's like, oh, that's a nice addition to the neighborhood.
Okay, that makes sense to me, but here's, I'm trying to be helpful, not give you trouble. I'm, I'm really trying to be helpful. If you could get this to the point where we're giving some waivers, but we're still being true to the spirit of our code, we'd be in a much better space when we come back together. If we're just totally saying we're going to ignore our code and do something that looks like Key West, we're going to have trouble because then the next applicant that comes along is going to say, well, you totally ignored your code for Mr. Thomas, why won't you do that for me? And so I'm just trying to get to a place, and we're talking about facades and you and I both know stucco and, you know, I could easily see some faux tile where that metal roof is and it wouldn't do, be much to
We're open to doing
Okay, all right.
And there is no waivers that we're asking for. I would just make one point. It, it does ask for rear entry in the overlay district, but we work with staff on that and the reason we're doing it off of Grove Hill is because of the park, because they were, we were asked by transportation to move the parking away from the park. And so that will be a waiver at a later point, but that was working with staff, so.
Got you.
But we're open and being able to work with staff. We've worked this far, we're going to keep doing it.
Good. I just wanted to have this conversation so we both knew. I didn't want you to come back in three months and go, oh my God, I thought he was, you know. Why didn't you bring this up three months ago?
Something that you would be happy to approve.
Very good, Mr. Thomas, thank you. Other questions, councilmembers? Okay, we've had no public comments, so there's nothing to rebut. In that case, I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning 0.24 plus minus acres of real property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Overlook Drive and Grove Hill Road with an addressable location of 8701 Overlook Drive within the downtown redevelopment area from zoning classification, single-family residential, R-10, to planned development, PD, providing for amendment of the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve?
To approve RCP 23-01 for the, for first public hearing and first reading of the ordinance addressing the property, 8701 Overlook Drive.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion.
I have a comment, I have a comment.
Councilmember?
I'd like to congratulate you guys. I really didn't think you'd be able to bring something back that would, that would work based upon what you were trying to do to begin with, but you've done a good job and I'm, I'm sure you're eating a lot of, of equity in, in, in doing so, but you've given, you've given us something to work with you on and I feel pretty confident that you're going to be able to, to meet the exterior zoning issues. And I agree that it's, it's not on 56th Street, it's not on Bush Boulevard, it's back off and I, I really feel strongly that we'll be able to come up with a, a set of, of exterior waivers or whatever that is going to work. But I just wanted to tell you, they did a great job with this. Thank you very much.
Other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No nays? Ordinance is adopted on first reading and will appear for a second reading and public hearing when? I have an open date here in June. Has that date been established yet, Mr. Sherman?
No, sir. We're still going through the development review process and our city engineer is overworked and he's getting to it when he can.
Okay, so because that date cannot be announced at this meeting, it will have to be noticed?
Yes, sir. We'll notice it in the paper, signs and letters to the neighbor.
Okay, so the second reading and public hearing on this is yet to be determined and will be publicly noticed according to the law.
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is carryover council business. We do have at least one carryover issue and that is the request we heard a few weeks ago to consider the motion to approve a resolution. There's a lot of words in there. We were asked to fund some school support grants that were ultimately not funded to the amount requested. They were funded, but only to the amount of $1,000, which is our cap, and so the requested amount was not fully funded. Councilmember Schistler has requested that item be reconsidered and so I will turn the table or the floor over to Mr. Schistler and he will explain.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I have to apologize to council and to the school support committee. Back in October, November, after we finished the, the grant cycle, I challenged the school support committee in, in their session to, A, acknowledge that the grants were done, but now is the time to go back to the schools and come up with a project whereby we're going to develop a microcosm, one class, one grade in some, in one of the schools. Go find a project that the school support committee can get behind and council can get behind with the intention of make it work and then it can spread throughout the rest of the schools. You can't, we, we're not big enough, we weren't strong to just do everybody at one time. So the challenge was to find a project that we could institute in, in, in a school, in a classroom. And then the election changes and I lost track of it and I apologize because this was my challenge to them to come back with a project and they did that, but I wasn't, I wasn't at the subsequent meeting, so I didn't, I didn't follow it. After the, and the, the, the point that I tried to make was, this is not a grant in the typical way that we look at the grants, where you look at individual teacher and they're going to grow a science, they're going to grow plants, or they're going to do this. This is something that was much deeper, much broader and it was, it was designed, or they were designed with the intention of really developing an incubator for the other schools and other classes to absorb and, and to cookie cutter from here to there, to there. So it was not just one little classroom, Mrs. Smith and her kids or whoever, this is, this is designed to, to cover a greater, a greater good. I apologize to council, I missed that and I didn't, otherwise I would have supported it in, in, in more earnest. I came to the next school support meeting, I had a lot of committee meetings, I got here before that, and as soon as we started talking, I realized what my mistake was. I would, I would request council to reexamine the, the request, the proposal and to ultimately fund it because I, I don't believe that, we asked, I asked the, I asked the committee to come up with a project, they came up with a project and I didn't support it properly to council to sell it and I, I apologize for that and I would ask council to reconsider the potential to, to fully fund both projects and to, too late for this year, obviously, it wasn't intended, but it'd be developed through the summertime to re, to be re, reissued or re, reestablished at the beginning of school for next year. This was something that was a challenge and I said, you guys have 150 years worth of educational experience, you got to come up with something. And they did and I apologize, I dropped the ball on that by not, by not supporting it fuller, but I would, I would request council to reexamine it and, and reconsider the motion for approval of both, both projects for, the one for PISO and the one for Temple Terrace Elementary.
Okay, so before we have further discussion, let me just put some structure on this so we know where we're going. There are two issues that we have to get through here. One is first, we, in order to reconsider, we would need a motion to reconsider. That motion would have to pass and then we would have discussion on whether to reconsider or not. So the first thing we would need to do is decide whether we want to reconsider it at all. So that's where we are now. So really too early to have discussion on the merits of whether we want to fund this or not. The first question is, do we even want to have the discussion?
I move to reconsider.
Yeah, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Yes.
On this motion?
No.
Okay. If there's no discussion on this motion, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No nays? Okay, council has agreed to reconsider these grants. Before I allow, do you have anything else that you'd like to add to your comments now that we're at this phase?
That's it.
Okay, Councilmember Fernandez? Oh, sorry, hold on.
So, so just to be clear, just to clarify, the, if you do want to proceed with the actual merits of the, of the request, you'd have to schedule that for the next meeting?
We can't do the second part without
It's not noticed, so we, we, we need to notice it so the public is aware that this is going to be
That makes sense. That makes sense.
So you're okay right now because you're having the discussion of whether you actually truly want to do that or not?
Well, we just did that. So we don't, so the second part cannot occur tonight, is what you're saying. That makes sense.
It would be on the agenda next time and we've done a little background on the grant program. I know this doesn't fall into the typical grant request that they get the big list and they go through everything, but I can't find that there's anything about this program other than giving grants. And so regardless of how it comes to the, the committee or to you, it's still the city giving a grant. And there was in 2006, it was adopted by council was adopted by council, an increase of a $500 limit to $1,000 per project. So, that's part of the grant program. My suggestion is that you consider raising that amount as before giving more than that amount, because the council in the past has limited grants to $1,000.
So, we already gave direction to the school support committee to come back to us with a recommended increase. We gave that direction already.
Yeah. And, and that's what happened before. They actually, in 2006, they came before council, and they, they talked about how 500, basically $500 was, was not enough. And so, it was raised to $1,000 at that time. So...
Well, my question is, in addition, and this was gonna be my question at the discussion, and that is, we have a set grant amount. Is something, if we're looking at this as special projects and not part of the, the traditional grant process, we don't have anything in their documents or their, their direction to consider special projects versus grants?
Okay, but I think...
So, that would be part of the...
Would be, but I think that we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, 'cause I think that's the discussion to be had, that the, what we've done here is agree to reconsider it.
That's the first step.
That's the first step. And then, at that meeting, it seems like it would be appropriate to have your input on a correct...
Yes, and, and it was done by resolution last time. It seemed that it was very informal and sort of happened suddenly. So, not that I'd like it to happen suddenly again, but...
Well, what could happen is, at the future meeting where this item is reconsidered, we could also potentially, we could, depending on the school support committee, we could have their suggestion brought to us earlier at the same meeting to say, "We are here to recommend that you increase the amount of funding from X to Z, and then we could do this all according to your instructions, all in the sunshine, all according to the council's will, and all..." Right? We could avoid...
Or that they, or that it allows, that the program allows for special projects...
Either way.
With a higher amount of money.
Either way. All I'm suggesting is, we could, we could revise our own rules, one way or the other, to allow the additional funding so that we would avoid all appearances of, "Well, we have our rules and we're ignoring them." So, we've already said at the last meeting that we were amenable to changing the rules. That's what we do. But once we establish the rules, we tend to stick to them. So, we could do that, both of those things at one time, in one, in one meeting. Yeah, Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, so just to clarify, for the purposes of staff putting the notice together, I'm not sure what the school support committee schedule is right now. And Councilmember was raising her hand, so...
We're meeting on Monday, this upcoming Monday.
Okay. So, that was my question, is if, if, if we'd be in line to do that for the next meeting, the first meeting in June, to get those two things done at once. So, it sounds like perhaps we should be.
I think we will.
Okay.
I don't think it would take them a lengthy discussion to recommend an increase in, I mean...
Thank the council for reconsidering.
So, we're good. We can, we can shoot, we can clear all this up hopefully in one swoop. Very good. Mr. Schuster, anything else? Thank you very much, sir.
I'm busy. I talk too much.
Okay, are there other, is there other council business or board reports? Okay, new business or, I guess, or board reports? Is there new business or board reports? Councilmember Abel?
I've had one. I have one. I'd like to discuss the procedures for maybe looking at our land development code for our downtown overlay district. We have those requirements that are in place for the Mediterranean Revival style. And, you know, I think in some areas, that might be appropriate to shoot for, but there are other areas where, you know, it might kind of stand out like sore thumb. So, I think, you know, always, you know, sometimes having to offer waivers for people and sometimes not, you know, we have the, a lot of potential for inconsistency there. So, I'm not really sure what the procedure is to initiate another look at the, the downtown overlay district code or the CRA code, but I'd like to open up that discussion.
So, we have coming up on the horizon. I don't know exactly when it's coming up. We have some strategic meetings already in the pipeline to, to talk about medium-range planning, strategic, you know, not the 2040 command, that's too far out. But we've talked about that already. It seems like this would be a good topic of conversation in that context. I don't know what our status is of that, or have we done anything?
So, we, we'd planned to do that, actually, in April, and then we lost our entire planning staff, so...
Yeah.
Actually, coincidentally, I'm gonna, I'd like to introduce, when I get to my section of the agenda, introduce our new city planner. And we've got some good leads on some planner one, candidates as well. So, our anticipation is we'll have that, that division fully staffed shortly, which will allow us the capacity to do, schedule that, that workshop that we had talked about. And the mayor's correct, we, we had discussed broader changes to the overall city land development code to address issues that people have raised, including Mr. Perko, who was here earlier, about sheds and side yard fences and whatnot. So, those are the kind of things we would have in that conversation. So, yeah, we're working towards that. It was just our staff, because we didn't have folks working, we really couldn't focus on it, but we can do that shortly now.
Understood. Thank you.
Would it be okay with you if we put that off just a little bit? Because, I mean, they've had a lot going on with new staff and...
Absolutely. It's not urgent, it's just, you know, some point.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, but we hear you. Okay. Other new business or board reports? Okay, very good. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I was just alluding to, I'd like to ask up our new city planner to the podium. So, this is Miranda Anaya. She hails from Citrus County.
County.
And as you know, in this marketplace, it's so hard to find great talented people, and we've got a great find here in, in Miranda. I think she's gonna be a wonderful addition to the city team. She's already come, she had the courage to make budget requests at her first, first week on the job, so that's pretty admirable. So, Miranda, if you want to say a few words?
Sure.
Welcome.
It's a pleasure to be here. As Carlos mentioned, I am from Citrus County, and so, it's quite different from Temple Terrace. But already, my first week here, I can tell that you have an active community and that there are some great residential and commercial areas. I'm looking forward to bringing some great projects before you and also amending the land development code and bringing that forward with you, as well as anything else that you would like to see. Looking forward to working with you all, and I'm sure you'll see me at the next council meetings.
Good. Miranda, welcome aboard. It's nice to have you.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay, the next item I have is, there's a report on your agenda. There was a citizen request made last month by Mr. Jerry Barnett, a resident in the Pleasant Terrace neighborhood. And for the community that may not be familiar with that particular part of the city, this is the, in the northwest corner of Temple Terrace, there are different traffic controls along Fowler and 56th Street and Fletcher as well, to preclude traffic from full access into and out of that neighborhood. And the gentleman had made a request to have those controls relaxed, to allow for full, both ingress and egress off of Fowler Avenue, for example. So, staff looked at this. We went through the history as to why those things came about. And what happened was that in the 1990s, that property was part of unincorporated Hillsborough County. There was a tremendous amount of cut-through traffic. So, as you can imagine, on Fowler, you have a significant amount of retail properties, so restaurants, shops, things like that. And then, you've got university housing and the University of South Florida main campus basically on the backside of this neighborhood. And so, it was referred to in the minutes from the 90s that there were over 10,000 cars a day cutting through this small residential neighborhood. As a result, there was a significant movement on the part of the homeowners association in that neighborhood to support annexation into the city, because there was a negotiated annexation proposal that included a traffic mitigation plan, and that was in your backup. So, the residents ultimately were asked to vote on the annexation proposal that included that plan, and that plan is reflective of what's out there today, the controls in that neighborhood. And so, that was approved. That vote was based on that proposal, and it was approved, and those controls were placed in by the city within a year of the, of the vote. Also, the residents committed to paying for half of the cost of those improvements, those mitigate, traffic mitigation improvements, and they paid over a period of 10 years, I believe it was, it was a regular payment that they had to make to do that. So, they had a financial, had financial skin in the game. To this day, we still get, I respect Mr. Barnett's request, but I will say, we get more requests from folks who want us to do more traffic calming in that neighborhood, because there's still a fair amount of folks who are unfortunately not respectful of the, of the controls and are going in when they shouldn't be going in through those, through those access points. So, staff has looked at this, and based on the history, based on the fact that the, what's out there was the basis of the vote to annexation, and also based on the fact that we continue to get requests for traffic calming, we feel that if we were to recommend this to city council, we would inevitably, the next day, get more traffic calming requests, and that would mean more financial burden on the city. So, at this point, we are not recommending this. However, obviously, it is the city council's purview, so, but we wanted to make sure you were aware of our position on it and ask for some direction.
Council members?
I just have one thing.
Vice Mayor Chambers?
It looks like no one's willing to change that. Is someone gonna let Mr. Barnett know our findings?
We sure, we certainly can, if that's the direction we want to go. Yep.
I would think so. I mean, he made the request.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I, I mean, I have to agree with your assessment of the, the overriding concerns are the traffic coming in from the high, high-density residential on one side and the high commercial usage on the other side, and more, I can see more residents being concerned. Now, if, if a group of residents were to come and say, "We're totally different than the people who were there when the annexation happened, and we no longer want this," that would, I would be willing to obviously listen to their interest and, and take that into account. But as it stands right now, I am not in favor of increasing the traffic into the neighborhood.
Will do. Council members? So, I, I very rarely say anything definitive, like, "I will never do this," or "I will always do this," 'cause you don't know what the circumstances are gonna be. But I'm gonna go on a limb here and say that, as long as I'm on this council, I will never support opening that neighborhood back up. And the reason that I'm so certain about this is, those people, believe me, I hear from a lot of them, and they're not happy now with the number of cars that cut through that neighborhood against the law. And of course, you can't sit there all day long and watch them. And many of them are residents of the neighborhood themselves. Shame on them, because they're the ones that should know better. But there is no way that I'm gonna tell those people that have lived on 51st Street since this problem began that we're gonna open these roads up. They will run us out of town on a rail. And, and maybe they could get a group, but believe me, the mass of group that would come in here to shut them down would be 50 times bigger. And in light of that, just looking at it pragmatically, I remember before this was annexed and when it was opened, that for a short time, that was my zone when I was a patrol deputy. So, I know the level of traffic that, that went through there. The university has probably more than doubled in size in terms of employees and students since, since the roads have been closed. So, the 10,000 cars a day that cut through there in 1999 would probably be 20,000 or 30,000 cars today, because the university has twice as many employees and students. On top of that, they're getting ready to build a stadium there. See? I just can't see any way that this makes sense at all. And so, I'm pretty sure, I mean, I try to keep an open mind, 'cause I don't know what's gonna happen in the future, but it's hard for me to envision a case where I would be like, "Okay, I didn't know. We should open them." I don't think that's gonna happen. So, anyway, I, I for one, not interested.
Okay. We hear you.
Do we need any kind of resolution to that effect, or just...
No, no.
I think we're good. This was, again, I just wanted to make sure the council was aware of where we stood as staff and wanted to see if it was okay with the council, so...
Okay.
And that's all I have.
That's all you have. City Attorney?
I have nothing.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmembers? Vice Mayor Chambers?
I have a comment about the city manager's report.
Okay.
I, I just wanna thank you, at least for me, I hope for the other ones, but, you know, you, we hear people in the persons wishing to be heard area, and you researched that, you and your staff out there, that you do a good job of doing that and reporting back to us, and that's what I want to thank you on, the reporting back.
You're good. So, I'd just like to echo that. You know, I tell people in the community all the time, "The city's good and getting better." In fact, I'd like to change the slogan, but they won't let me. But it's good. The city of Temple Terrace is good, and it's getting better. And they think when I say that, that I just, you know, "Well, he's the mayor. He has to say that," which is true, I guess. But, but I mean it. And we heard the auditor report today, we heard that. There's, there's evidence of this, that you getting back to us on citizen complaints that are brought up here at this meeting and publicly getting back to us, that's tangible evidence. And I could go through every one of these directors and talk about tangible evidence that the city is getting better. We are good, and every one of you guys in your departments is getting even better, and we're gonna keep doing that. We've got a great council. We, we really do. We've got the council that can hit this thing home. We're gonna win some Super Bowls here. So, thank you so much for what you do. And if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.